Township Porcipity Troy Hills, regular meeting council meeting August 21st, 2012. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law by filing a notice in the office of the township clerk, posting the meeting notice on a bulletin board municipal building December 15th, 2011, where it's remained since that date. Legal notice appeared about the Daily Record Star Ledger forwarded by fax to local newspapers and local radio stations, December 19th, 2011. Note, council meetings are videotaped, aired on cablevision, public access channel 21, 2:00 PM Sundays, also available for viewing at www.porcipity.net. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Vigilante.
Present.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, John Anglaccino, Township Attorney, Peggy Mader, Acting Clerk. Please rise for flag. Mr. Vigilante, if you would.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It wasn't a thing, trust me. Upcoming meetings, 9/11/2012, 7:30 PM, Agenda Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. 9/18/2012, 7:30 PM, Regular Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment tonight in regards to the congratulations to the Port Troy Little East boys on their, you know, getting to the World Series and, you know, making Porcipity proud. We're working on a modicade or a parade for them. We're looking at Sunday right now. It'll be more solidified tomorrow, what we're going to be doing for them. But I met with the coach this morning, this afternoon, and we're going to have a little nice event for them when they come back. They're coming back on Friday, and we're looking to have something for them on Sunday.
Mayor, you realize there's a picnic to be right for the victims in Lake Hiawatha?
I know.
Right, and it's going to be a little later than that.
And I also spoke to them, that's the only time they could do it. Also, as everybody knows, Porcipity was ranked number one in the state of New Jersey and number 15 in the nation as best small cities to live. CNN, Money Magazine, we were ranked, which is really, really, really phenomenal. Back in June, Money Magazine called up Town Hall, asked for the mayor. I spoke with a woman named Beth Breverman, and she asked me, why is Porcipity Troy Hills the best place to live in the United States? I told her, come down to Porcipity and I'll show you why. And she did. And myself and Jasmine took her on a tour for three and a half hours. We showed her all of Porcipity, the corporate centers, we showed her our recreation centers, I brought her to the PAL, and during that time they were having a program for special needs children from the high school. I showed her everywhere that you could imagine Porcipity, every part of Porcipity that there was.
Craftsman Farms?
Uh-huh. Brought her to Craftsman Farms, we brought her everywhere. And at the end of that meeting that we had rehearsed, she was very proud. We brought her all over, to almost every civic association in town, every homeowner's association. And at the end, when we came back here, we sat down, we talked, and we sold our own Porcipity. And Porcipity is a wonderful place, the diversity that's amongst us, and that was another thing, I really believe, that they ranked us 15th in the nation, number one in the state of New Jersey. So I'm proud, I'm proud as the mayor to be designated to be, to have that designation.
Mayor, real quick, I spoke to the owners of Fuddruckers today, and they want to host the boys and the coaches for a free dinner, so I'll get the information through...
Yeah, they were contacted already.
Okay, they were. I'll get the information to Michelle, and she can...
This is the time we should be little egos, because we could be eating free the rest of the week. Applebee's, Fuddruckers.
I could pass Hiawas.
You could. But I'll tell you right now, I went to the game on Saturday. You go down to the World Series down there, and it's exciting. And not just, you know, I mean, for every team, these are young boys that are putting a big stage. And after they won the game on Saturday, it's totally amazing what they do. You don't even get to greet the kids. They leave in a van, they exclude them from everybody else because of the pressure that's put upon them. So when they won, all the parents have to sit and wait and wave at the van as their kids go off. But, that being said, I got to tell you, their sportsmanship is phenomenal. And like I said prior, I went to the Middle Atlantic Regional Finals in the region, and before the game started, Port Troy East got sportsmanship of the tournament award for being good sportsmanship. And every game, they were gentlemen to every team, to the umpires. I don't know how they do it, because I know I get frustrated with umpires, but I'm proud of them, and, you know, you think about it. One of the fathers said to me, Mr. Scinelli, said to me, Mayor, whoever thought last year he got flooded, he got flooded in Lake Hiawatha. It was a sad time, and now we're looking at a happy time, which is true. So, on the website will be the date, which we think is going to be Sunday, the time, and we think we're going to be ending at Veterans Memorial. And so, just keep your eyes open to papers, keep your eyes open to Pats, keep your eyes open to all the media that you can, and go on the website, and you'll have the dates and time. Thank you.
Tomorrow they do get a consolation game, they're playing Canada at 11:00 AM.
Okay, ordinance is second reading and public hearing, 2012:30, Mr. DiPiero.
Ordinance 2012:30, the foregoing ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, on July 23rd, 2012. Be it resolved in an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills," amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 22 through Streets, and Section 24, Multiway Stop Intersections of the Code of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, be read in title only on second reading and a hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Vigilante. At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance to the public, and only this ordinance. Seeing no one come forward, Mr. DiPiero.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading...
Hold on. Hold on. Okay. Sorry.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante.
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance number 2012:32, Mr. Creefy.
Ordinance number 2012:32, the foregoing ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, on July 23rd, 2012. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills," states, "State of New Jersey authorizing a lease agreement between the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills and Porcipity Soccer Club Incorporated for Reynolds Avenue Soccer Fields and associated facilities." Be read in title only on second reading and a hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Creefy, second by Mr. Vigilante. At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance to the public, and only this ordinance. Seeing no one come forward, Mr. Creefy.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Creefy, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante.
Affirmative.
Council President Stanton.
Yes, before we open up to the public, Mr. Creefy just had a question he wanted to ask.
Mayor, last week we talked about the sewer surplus, and you said that we had an auditor...
Consultant.
A consultant reviewing the account. Did we speak to him?
Well, first, he wasn't spoken to yet, but there's several factors involved here. And one is possible, one is litigation. So right now, once that litigation is in effect, which it is right now, that is being factored in with the consultant as well. Rest assured, though, that once this matter is resolved, we get a report from our consultant, then we will adjust rates accordingly. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this up to the public, you'll be given five minutes to speak.
Will we do?
And please, if you're going to get up and speak, please come sit in the first two rows. Please sign in.
Hi, my name is Barbara Bayrudy, I live at 24 Dogwood Lane, and May 22nd, I sent in a letter for a streetlight request to be put on my street, and I'd like to know the status of it.
I have not seen one. It has to, it has to be engineered, right?
I have a copy of the letter, I sent it to Jasmine, I had sent it to your attention.
When did you send it?
May 22nd.
I don't know exactly where you live, it's pretty dark over there.
It's very dark.
Right over here, right?
Up the road by Intervale, off of Woodcrest Road. I do have a copy of the letter, if you'd like it.
Yeah, I would like to have a copy, and I'll speak to the township engineer in regards to it.
All right, and then the last, when 39 Dogwood was robbed, it was kind of sad that the officer needed a flashlight to actually find, come around the bend, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
You gentlemen want a copy of this as well?
Please.
All right, then, you know what, I'll give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Just without knocking over the entire table as well. Good evening, Dave Ferguson for Bisquey Drive. Just a comment to say thank you very much for passing ordinance 2012:32, which allows the administration to renew the lease agreement for Reynolds Avenue Fields. For the last 20 years, we've done our best to keep those in pristine condition, to make the soccer club and those fields useful to the youth of our community. Just this past summer, we host, I was privileged to host a couple of matches there, and we were complimented on how outstanding those facilities were. So, our vow is to keep it for, to continue to keep the upkeep of those fields to the condition which we've expected during that time, but I just wanted to express our sincere gratitude on behalf of the club for renewing the lease, so thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, Councilman DiPiero, and Councilman Stanton for attending the meeting that we had with the DOT and the area residents that were affected, that are affected by the Route 80 construction. Maybe some, we are kind of hopeful that some things were resolved last night, but we still are going to write our concerns to the DOT about the way the ramps, the ramp to Route 80 eastbound, and the other frontage ramp come together, and we feel that is kind of dangerous still. As far as, I see you have the noise ordinance on the resolution here, and in here, it said... I don't have my glasses right. The last part, where the, that the residents will be advised, advance of the nighttime construction, so that they will know when the really heavy stuff starts, is that right?
I think that's what we discussed last night, that you would be notified.
Right, okay, okay. Then, our other problem in our neighborhood, I guess...
When you hear the first jackhammer, that'll be your...
(laughing).
That's what they're gonna knock on your door with.
Okay, well anyhow, we do have another problem in our neighborhood, thank you to I don't know what, but we have a rat infestation problem, which the Board of Health is very complacent in addressing, where we had kind of thought that they would be more active in sending the notices out.
Where, Mary?
In my backyard, in my neighbor's backyard. When you're eating, they happen to come running by, but it's Kingston, Marcela Road area, Everett, Lakeshore Drive, we're on the other side of the Lake Hamilton, and we had suggested to her that maybe she needs to get the housing involved in going around for like spot inspections to see who's got garbage laying around.
Where are they coming from?
I wish I knew. I knew.
There's got to be a source of food, or they wouldn't be around.
Exactly, there was, there was a problem, we understand, where the exterminator did get 45 rats in one place, and it needs to be better addressed, and she was just so complacent with us, it was like, okay, live with it, and it's your problem, get an exterminator. That was not nice. So, and, one more comment, the guys in the back there work hard, and they do a good job, so if they come before you with help, I kind of hope you listen to them, because when the roads need plowing, they're there, let me tell you. As a school bus driver, I knew that, so I'd like to thank them. That's it. Thank you.
Mary? Mayor, could I respond to Mayor, and one thing here? Mayor, Gordon Meth sent Jasmine an email today in regards to that left turn lane from Littleton on the Park Road during construction. They're going to allow it, and they're going to have the restriping plan so we can get the shoulder back.
Oh, thank you.
Okay?
Well, I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. This question is directed, I guess, at Jasmine on page 19 of the consent agenda.
Page 19?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your...
It's my page 19, well, it's numbered up. The Brookwood Swim Club, is that, that was Veterans Park, right?
I have a 19. Yeah, the Brookwood Swim Club?
Brookwood Swim Club.
Yes.
Yes.
The cancellation of the ordinance?
Right. What's the story with that? That's been in the budget for the last 11 years? The cancellation of that, that $550,000 was in the general budget?
Yes. Not in the general budget, it was in capital, it was authorized bond funds that we're canceling now. We don't, we don't need that money.
Okay.
We don't, we're not planning to do any major improvements to Veterans Park that we could not cover with the Open Space Trust Fund monies.
Okay. Now, I just don't remember, did we use township money, Open Space Funds to purchase the property back in '01?
Are you talking about Veterans Park?
Veterans.
We used township, county, state, all the above.
So it was, it was Open Space Funds? Porcipity Open, municipal Open Space Funds?
I'm pretty sure it was.
I don't, can't speak for the, where the money came from, county and the state, but it was three different funding sources for that.
Okay, okay, because I was just segueing into, I remember when the whole Open Space ordinance passed, there was an issue of whether we can use Open Space Funds for improvements if the property wasn't purchased with Open Space Funds. I just wanted to make sure that was kosher on that. The other thing is, just real minor, when I used the restroom before, I saw that the vending machine license was expired for a few months, and I see it's an outside vendor, and I wouldn't want the township to get in trouble with that. Thanks.
I can't say to me, but come and get one. They have chocolate bars in front of my 501, but I can't get them. Hey, everybody's, you gotta sign this. No, everybody, nobody's signed. Roy Mesmer, 10 Drummond Drive. Council President, I'm going to follow up this with a letter tomorrow or the next day, like a memo, because I got a lot of bullets here tonight. I'm confused myself. I went up to, this, I shouldn't have taken five minutes for this, but I went up to see the state game, and I heard a lot about the team over the last couple of years, and I just had to see that team play one inning, and I knew they were special. Their footwork, their, just everything about them. I'll always remember that team. Something I want to bring up to the mayor and to Jasmine, going back to ordinance 2012:31, I had called about 200 people up to watch the video and to read the ordinance first, and it wasn't posted. So, I mean, we got to get these things up and running immediately. I don't, are you aware of that, Mayor?
Which ordinance was that?
The 31, the ordinance, that was...
What is that about?
The ordinance, the stacking ordinance, last week. But no, it's off now, but I'm saying, back two weeks, a month ago, you guys didn't put it up for about four or five days after this council meeting. That shouldn't have happened, because I was telling people to go to the website, and it wasn't up. The Sheep Farm, I happened to go by there today. This is something Jimmy and I have spoken in the past when he was councilman before. Really like to see something done with that property, and, Council President, and the house. I mean, maybe there's a vet in town that was in the reserves, that's out of the house right now. I'm sure the house inside is not in good shape, because that's probably without heat, water, for many, many years, but a bunch of volunteers like myself, I'd love to get that house in shape. The next thing, is this insurance with this broker. I think the taxpayers of Porcipity owe due an explanation why Ada Visca's firm was dropped. I know a lot about this, I told our township council that night that that meeting was illegal. I wasn't going to pursue it, there's just so much I can do. But I think we owe an explanation. She's the one that came in here and told all of you, the mayor, about this wellness thing, it was doing so fantastic. This other firm, Access Point, they didn't, Fairview, whatever they're called, they didn't bring that up. I just think that the taxpayers owe an explanation, and why this one company now is getting the insurance coverage. If there's bad news, tell us. Police chief, I put in an Oprah request in last week, and I got it back. I haven't had a chance to really analyze it or do a matrix, but compared it to Peckerman's, to Zenzo to Peckerman, I don't see work weekend there for the police chief. I did a quick comparison, because I got Peckerman's W2 forms, and there's a big pay difference. I think the taxpayers of Porcipity owe an explanation. Especially, it's very easy to answer tonight, Council President, does he work five days a week, like Peckerman did, or is he working four or three days a week? Next thing, where is all this money coming from, from the town that we're paying out? The 200,000 last week, these increases, the situation in the police department, the promotions, again, we owe an explanation. Now, it's only coming from one of two places. Either you guys, not you, Jimmy, this time, but didn't review the budget carefully, and there's a lot of slush in it, a lot of fat in it, or two, we're taking it out of the water or sewer or golf course utilities, I just, or we're not paying our bills, which I don't think is the last one. But where's this money coming from? As to the sewer refund, I'm going to bring it up again, couldn't have said it better. Ray Figano spoke last week, he's worked with me on that too, and he knows quite a bit about it. I was hoping he was here tonight, he's probably at the Board of Ed meeting. Jasmine, last week you brought up, when Mike DiPiero asked you a question, about the other towns that filter their stuff through our sewer treatment plant, that they pay at cost. We pay at cost too. Supposed to be a break even. Obviously, it's not a break even. The bonding, Mayor, you have brought up that now we got to be careful of our bonding. Council Vice President, Mike DiPiero, you know very well that that was never brought up before, about the bonding. Every time we want our money back or a credit, there's another excuse, there's another thing that comes up. Two or 30 seconds? Next thing, the occupancy. And I'd love to be on this committee, we've got big problems in town, and I spoke to Jasmine, and I'll say it publicly, we have a lot of problems in this town with the occupancy, and whether she was misquoted, or just information received from her departments. Servicemen, you guys, every year you bring up how you have this, I know, go quick, resolution regarding that if you're a town employee, you get paid the difference. What I'd like to see next year, is at Veterans Park, when we have the concert...
Finish this.
Thank you. That next year's concert goes to the reservists in town who have been called to active duty two, three, four times, whatever, have a committee set up, divide up the money to help those families, pay their real estate taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, this is something for Jimmy.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't know what I said.
Just so you know, Roy, disabled veterans can apply through the Veterans Association, and depending on the amount of their disability, like for example, if they have a 50% disability, they can get a 50% reduction on their taxes. Now, what I will say is that, this was a state mandated program, unfortunately, the state does not reimburse the town, so the rest of the taxpayers of the town pick up the burden, which no one's going, I'm sure going to complain about it, but again, another state mandated program that they were supposed to reimburse this for and never have. But there's a few veterans, I'm not sure of the quantity, but I know there's a few that have full exemption from paying tax, and there's some that have a certain percentage of their property taxes that they defer.
What's a state mandated program?
The veterans.
Paying the difference?
No, if a veteran's disabled, let's say he's 100% disabled, he doesn't have to pay his taxes.
Disability, yeah, okay.
That was a state mandated program. Now, so if that veteran was paying $20,000 in taxes, that 20 grand gets throughout the rest of the taxpayers of this town, not the state.
I don't know.
Any disabled veteran.
Okay, seeing nobody else come forward, I'd like to close the open session. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion. Be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, which case an item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante.
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance is for introduction, 2012:33. Mr. Vigilante.
An ordinance amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 29, Bus Stops, the Code of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed on the first reading of the meeting of the Township Council, Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, held on August 21st, 2012, and said ordinance be further to consider for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 18th, 2012, at 7:30 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante.
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. 2012:34, Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance of the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey, approving table of organization of the Porcipity Troy Hills Police Department. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Porcipity Troy Hills, held on August 21st, 2012, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 18th, 2012, at 7:30 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
I would just like to state that it's been brought up that I may have a conflict with this ordinance. I asked for a written opinion on that, which I just received today, at about 5:00. I have not really had a chance for myself or my people to review this. So, at this time, I am going to say yes with the right to, when it's read for second reading and final passage, that will give me time to review the information that has been given to me, and determine at that time if I believe there is a conflict or not. So, yes.
The fraud...
What?
So you know you do abstain.
Okay, all right, then I'll abstain now. I'll abstain.
About enough to your introduction.
Okay, Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante.
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Add on number one.
Councilman, may I please make a stand, if you don't mind, in regards to this ordinance? Just want to set the record straight for the council. I'm going to be introducing a ordinance to put the OEM permanently in the police department at the next agenda meeting. Hopefully you agree to have the OEM permanently in the police department. Right now, it's through my mayoral authority that I do this. I said it in the very beginning, public safety comes first, and I believe that the OEM belongs in the police department. That being said, we had three captains as of 2005. It was three captains, 19 sergeants, and seven lieutenants. In 2005, the chief then made a recommendation to this council, not this council, but Mr. DiPiero and myself and Councilman Vigilante, to add a fourth captain. On 2005, under the recommendations of the chief, the fourth captain was added.
Let's move forward to 2012, when Chief DeZenzo now makes a recommendation that's ignored. Then again in 2005, same members, myself, Councilman Vigilante, Councilman DePiero, increased the lieutenants from seven to eight. So you had seven lieutenants, you had three captains. Once again, recommendations of the chief of police then. I'm still agreeing to re- eliminate a lieutenant, but to keep the captain on. That's my recommendation. Why? It's very important to have OEM in the police department run by a captain as recommended by the chief of police. The gentleman who runs the police department, as you've heard at past council meetings, I spoke to this police officer, I spoke to that police officer, well, I'd like to have the name of that police officer, because that police officer does not run the police department. Mr. DeZenzo, Chief DeZenzo runs the police department. It's his recommendations that are made. No other police officer has the authority to make such. But that being said, I just wanted the public to know that it was three captains prior to today, and it was made for captains by the three gentlemen, myself included. I will have that ordinance prepared, and I will hand it into the council for the next agenda meeting to discuss putting OEM permanently into the police department. I said it from day one, public safety comes first, readiness, preparedness, and I'm gonna stick by that. Thank you.
All right, I need to respond to that then, that's a spotty history at best.
Spot, whatever you wish.
Because when we had four captains, we had a police chief, and we had four captains. When Michael Peckerman was the police chief, and Michael Luthen was the mayor, they came to us and asked for a deputy chief. Chief Peckerman needed a deputy chief. So, we agreed, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Barbaria was on the council at that time, we agreed that if we give you a deputy chief, we're gonna remain at three captains, we're not gonna get top-heavy. So it was a chief, a deputy chief, and three captains. And that's what we had. Now we want the deputy chief, and now we want a fourth captain on top of it. I don't see why a lieutenant cannot run OEM. We had a $30,000 employee run an OEM. Yeah, they wanna do a better job of coordinating with the volunteers and the fire departments, and that's fine. I don't see why it has to be a captain. What this ordinance will do is not eliminate the position of Captain Storms. What this ordinance will do is, when there is a vacancy, one of the captains either retires or gets promoted to deputy chief or chief, then we will go back to three captains. So we're not eliminating anybody's job at this point in time.
Just, well, just to make clear that, in 2005, there was a chief, a deputy chief, and four captains.
No, there wasn't.
So it's, it's right here in the ordinance, I'll give it to you after the meeting. Back to the matter is that, my point is this, and that's all this is, is recommendations were made at both, in 2005 by a chief and in 2012 by a chief. So, we'll go from there. Thank you.
May I have a question? I know after subsequent, when I was off the council, there was a study done. Do we have copies of that, was ever provided to the council? If not, can I get a copy of it?
Yes, I'll give you a copy, council. I'll email, you want me to email it to you?
Please.
A PDF, or you want a copy?
Whichever's easier.
I'll make you a copy.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, add-on number one, Mr. Karifi.
Governing body certification of the annual audit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Vigilante, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Vigilante, number two, please.
Appointing a permanent municipal clerk and local registrar of vital statistics.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. DePiero.
Discussion. Yes, please. Unfortunately, I appreciate, I was invited to attend these interviews and because of my schedule was not able to make it. I know Mr. DePiero was there, who else?
Yourself.
Can we just get a little background for public record of, you know, the person that we hired, or why we hired her? From maybe the council members over there, or the administration, just... I mean, I know, but just for the public's information.
Yancy was Zero, Zero Miss, is actually here with us tonight, and she comes from Prospect Park, she was the municipal clerk and registrar in Prospect Park since 2006, Yancy? 2004.
Yancy, come on up to the mic.
She, prior to that, she was in North Eldon? Eldon, and did some work in the clerk's office, is that correct? Yeah. And she is active in the clerks, both the State Clerks Association and the... Are you president of the...
I'm the president of the...
Speak into my...
I'm the president of the Passaic County Clerks Association. I'm the raffle chair of the State Clerks Association.
Just wanna say, welcome aboard then, sorry I was unable to attend.
Everyone?
Welcome aboard, Yancy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. DePiero, add-on number three, please.
Authorizing a waiver of Chapter 285 Noise of the Municipal Code.
Second. Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session. Reason of litigation.
Take a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Vigilante, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, resolution, whereas the open public meeting, Act Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the Township Council, the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss litigation, whereas minutes will be kept once a matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality and minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Vigilante, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, thank you everyone for your not staying, goodnight all.
Thank you, sir, that's all right, that's all right, good. Somebody cut me off on a motorcycle, I had to lay it down. Pulled the three people, I had to pull my bike's inner...
Well, you were hurt, too.
Had to pull it off.
Wait, you know something?
But even if I'm, even if I'm strong, I can't. It's hard, them bikes are...
We good?
Yes, ready? Can I talk?
Yep, good.
Resolution of the...
Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, Mr. Vigilante.
Resolution of Township of Precipity Troy Hills authorizing a settlement agreement and release with Robert Whitman. Whereas Robert Whitman, Mr. Whitman commenced an action against the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, the township, known as Robert Whitman versus Township of Precipity Troy Hills, bearing Office of the Administrative Law, docket number Charlie Sierra Victor Lima November 11285-007 November, as well as an action known as Robert Whitman versus Precipity Troy Hills, bearing Superior Court docket number Mike Romeo Sierra Lima 130211, the claim. And whereas while not admitting liability or fault, the township has engaged in the settlement negotiation with Mr. Whitman, and whereas in light of the claims and other issues raised by Mr. Whitman, the township desires to enter into a settlement agreement with Mr. Whitman to avoid the cost and inconvenience of litigation. And whereas the township and Mr. Whitman have reached an amicable resolution to the claims, which have been memorialized in confidential settlement agreement and release, and whereas the township will be required to pay $40,000 to Mr. Whitman in consideration of the settlement. Now therefore be it resolved as follows that, number one, the Township Council hereby authorize the confidential settlement agreement and release by and between the township and Mr. Whitman, and whereas, number two, the Township Council hereby authorize the township attorney and/or township clerk to execute and deliver the confidential settlement agreement and/or release in the manner set forth in the confidential settlement agreement and release.
Second, motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.